We are back live and we will move to Agenda Item C-1. And I will turn to our Honorable Presenter, Mr. Collins, and/or you're going to turn it over to Mr. Casares.
Thank you, Mayor. I will turn the presentation over to our WRF Program Manager, Eric Casares. But we do have city staff and other staff consultants here who can answer questions as this is a, in addition to having action items, it also is a broad update on the WRF program and hasn't been one to City Council in quite some time. So we want to make sure you're capable of answer or ask all the questions and try to answer as many of them as we can tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casares.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Eric Casares, the WRF Program Manager. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about Item C-1, which is a general review of the status of the WRF project. There was a number of items that were identified in the staff report in terms of recommendations. I wanted to go over those here briefly. The first number of items is really just to receive the status report of the WRF program. And specifically, we want to talk about a number of different elements, including -- there we go. There we go. Do you want to do it for me? Thanks. Including a status update on the actual WRF design-build project itself, on the onsite facilities, a discussion of the permitting approach for the coastal development permit, looking at going with the consolidated permitting approach, a status update on the conveyance facilities project. We have Mike Fisher from Waterworks Engineers, the program manager, or excuse me, the project manager for the design of those facilities here tonight to give an update, a brief update on the project budget, and then if you can provide any other direction deemed appropriate by a majority of council. We are asking for one specific action tonight, and that's approval of Resolution Number 0819, authorizing staff to complete and submit an application to LAFCO for a sphere of influence designation for approximately 400 acres of the Tri-W Inc. property near South Bay Boulevard and the annexation of the 27.6 acres of that property. And we'll get into some of that discussion here in a moment. So the WRF design-build project, I'll start off with that. This is just a brief timeline that goes through some of the major milestones, going back to June 13th of this previous year, when staff brought the recommendation to identify the Philance Black and Beach team as the preferred proposer for the WRF design-build project. After that time, staff and the program manager worked to negotiate a design-build contract, and that was brought to council on October 23rd, and that contract was approved. And since that time, we've had a number of different workshops with the members of the design-build team, a number of them reviewing a number of technical aspects of the project, some focused on some things like electrical and instrumentation. But we've had roughly four or five different workshops, including a partnering meeting with members of staff and a number of the different folks on the program technical So there's a number of different deliverables that the Philance Black and Beach team is responsible for during the design effort for the project before, as we get into construction. The first one is the schematic design, or the 30% design, also known as the conceptual engineers' report. We're going to focus on that one here tonight because it really is going to set the stage for exactly what that WRF project is going to look like. As we talk about the delivery of this first big deliverable from the design-build team, I want to go back to something that was, some things that were done at the last council meeting on January 8th. In terms of the roles of the citizens advisory groups, we interact with a number of different citizens advisory groups, and the decision was made at that meeting to kind of split the roles of those different groups between technical and financial. And so, just to review that really quickly, the WRFCAC is really in charge of the technical aspects of the project, and then CFAC is involved in overseeing the financial aspects of the project, with the city council kind of seeing the whole big picture. And so, in respect to these role changes, we've identified a process for bringing forth the information in that conceptual engineers' report over the course of the next several months. And so I just wanted to review a couple of those dates with you here. Our plan is to bring the conceptual engineering report presentation to a special meeting of WRFCAC on March 13th or 14th. The reason for the special meeting is that the normally scheduled meeting would be held, I believe, on the 7th, and a number of staff are going to be out of town for a work outing. And so, we're going to propose to move that to the 13th or 14th in working with WRFCAC to get that scheduled. So that's the first piece, and that's going to focus on any technical changes to the project that was identified in the design-build agreement. Then, for the second meeting on March 19th, we're going to bring any cost-related impacts to the guaranteed maximum price that was given by the Philance Black and Beach team. Those will be brought to CFAC for a presentation and review. So as I mentioned, we've been holding a number of different workshops with the design builder over the last several months, and identifying ways to best optimize the project. So any cost-related impacts would be presented to CFAC on March 19th, and then the plan would be at the March 26 council meeting, as we would bring not only the technical discussion to council, but also the cost-related, any cost-related impacts for council to consider and determine how to move forward on some of those cost-related impacts. So that's the schedule. So we've got a pretty busy March in terms of really a big focus on the design-build effort. Really, the goal is, at the end of March, we walk out with a final design-build project that will move forward and will reflect any changes from the project that was developed So that was the WRF design-build project. The second portion, the second portion of the presentation has to do with the South Bay Boulevard property acquisition. So as was mentioned previously, the city signed an MOU with Tri-W Enterprises, the owner of the property at South Bay Boulevard, in October of 2016. One of the stipulations in that MOU is that the city is to make application to LAFCO for one annexation of the 27.6 acre WRF site. So that's the smaller component of the property. And then, as someone pointed out earlier, the remainder property, as is referred to in the MOU, the city would make application to include that roughly 400 acres to the sphere of influence. Again, this is a stipulation within the city-signed MOU. Up here on the screen, we just have a picture showing those, that parcel, the 27.6 acre parcel, and then the remainder parcel. The area in green is the annexation portion, the area in blue would be the sphere of influence component of the application, and the red line indicates the city's boundary there, the city limit boundary on the, would be the southern portion of the site. Land use permitting is the third item I wanted to talk a little bit about. And so, the city's been working, actively working with San Luis Obispo County for a number of years in how this project would be permitted from a conditional use permitting standpoint. And the original thought was that that process would go through the county, and the county would be the permitting agency, with the city eventually annexing the property. And in discussions with the county as of late, as well as staff from the Coastal Commission, we started talking about some of the timelines based on the current project schedule. And so, in looking at what that pathway would look like for the WRF project, here we're talking about just the WRF project, the inside-the-fence-line component that's within the county area. It would look something like this, with a planning commission date around March or April of this year. If there was an appeal to that, to that application, it would likely go to Board of Supervisors around July of this year. If there was another appeal, that would likely go to the Coastal Commission for a substantial issue determination, and then would eventually make its way to the Coastal Commission in October of 2019 for the de novo hearing. And why these dates are important is that there are some, a couple of things that have been identified in the design-build agreement around cost escalation. So there's a 12-month clock that we've got from when the design-build agreement was signed in October of 2018 and October 2019, when the price can change based on escalation. There's also another stipulation in that contract, if there is some additional, additionally, it can be modified if escalation exceeds a certain rate in a less-than-12-month period. And I can get into the details of that in pull-up the design-build agreement. But what it comes down to is, we're trying to get the project permitted so we can start construction as soon as possible, because time is money on this, not just the escalation, but the sooner that the project can start, the better chance the city has to reduce the project cost. What I've got below is a very similar parallel path for the other portion of the project, the conveyance facilities portion that would be located in the city limits, and would be permitted by the city, looking at going to Planning Commission around March 2019, City Council hearing in April 2019. And it would likely follow a similar pathway if there were a number of appeals all the way to the Coastal Commission. An alternative path is to approach this with a consolidated permit, where the whole project or the whole program would be taken to the Coastal Commission. And as I mentioned, the original thought was that it would move through the county, but with discussions with county staff and with Coastal Commission staff based on workload and other things at the county, and our desire to, number one, get this project under construction before October of 2019, we identified the consolidated path as the best approach forward. We are currently working on and preparing information for the application. We'd been preparing a lot of that information previously for the application because the county's process is really not that different in terms of a lot of the technical information that's asked for. The staff report for the Coastal Commission would be developed by staff and would be completed around late March, with the hopes of going to the Coastal Commission hearing, the local Coastal Commission hearing. They haven't identified the particular location, but it is in the central area between April 10th and April, excuse me, April 10th and April 12th. We can discuss this further when you have questions. The main component of the presentation has to do with the conveyance facilities project. A similar presentation was given to WRFCAC back in December 17th of this previous year. And I'm going to ask Mike Fisher to come up to talk a little bit about some of the work that's been done around the 30% design for that project. A couple of things that I wanted to highlight before we get into some of the technical discussion was, as you all remember, we went through a budgeting exercise back in April, May, June of this previous year, in working with the city manager-appointed Blue Ribbon Commission to try to reduce the project budget or the project cost, and develop the right number to take into the Prop 218 process. As a result of that exercise and working with the Blue Ribbon Commission, we had to make some assumptions around the conveyance facilities project based on our best, of the best available information at the time. Based on the work that Waterworks had done previously, it wasn't formalized in their, in a conceptual engineering report, is we looked at it, and the West alignment was significantly less cost in terms of capital cost. We also, around the late-June time period, they brought to us the concept of a dual pump station option, which also carries along with it some cost savings as opposed to one single large pump station located down there at the city's existing corporation yard. The other item that was brought to us, which didn't necessarily reduce costs, but was best engineering practice and was going to be the best solution for the city long-term in terms of operability, was a dual raw wastewater force mains. So multiple force mains used to carry the raw sewage from the existing treatment plant site to the new proposed WRF site. All of these assumptions here were part of the $126 million budget that was presented and what was put forward in the Prop 218, through the Prop 218 process. And I have just a little excerpt here from the Blue Ribbon Commission report dated June 21st, 2018, regarding the alignment and the decision to include the West alignment as the basis of the budget at that time. With that, I want to have Mike Fisher come up here and talk a little bit about some of the technical aspects of the alignment.
Thank you, Eric. Mayor, heading council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to present. Mike Fisher with Waterworks Engineers. I'm the project manager for the design of the off-site facilities. I have with me today also Tim Lewis in our office, who is one of the pipeline engineers for the project, and also involved with the analyses. Mr. Casares, give a good background on how we got to this point. What I wanted to give you here was kind of a more summary of the stepwise approach we used to capitalize on the previous work that you had done, as well as new field assessment and calculations, that were with the intent of producing a design, a, excuse me, necessary to complete a comprehensive and fresh analysis of the off-site conveyance facilities, pipelines and pump stations, necessary to move the wastewater from or to the water reclamation facility and return the treated water for beneficial reuse and/or discharge to the ocean outfall. And what I've identified here are kind of some of the key steps that we utilized in that process. We used basically this stepwise approach, and the intent of this was to ensure that we had all of the items in place while we made the decisions to move forward with this. And so, the first item was the design capacity, which was, how much flow do we need to move from point A to point B, which is from the existing treatment plant to the water reclamation facility? How do we optimize the pipeline, meaning the number of pipelines, so that we can ensure we have a optimal analysis? We then looked at potential routes to go from point A to point B. In other words, how do we identify an alignment that tries to minimize constraints and how those constraints affect the public, as well as produce a fall within the cost estimate that was available for the project? Then sizing the pump stations based on that analysis, then selecting a preferred alternative and moving forward with final design. So the first step in the process is basically laying out the capacity that the station needs to move. In that instance, you've got a very wide range of operational conditions. You have the low flows during normal operation, which is basically point, the minimum hourly flow that's at your plant, which is .3 MGD. You've got a average flow, which is 1 MGD. And what we did was, we analyzed the facility master plan that was originally completed as in a draft format. We analyzed city historical data, and then we added into that analysis the detailed one-water sewer plan that was completed. And by using all of those various sources, both previous work and the most up-to-date analysis, we were able to confirm the design capacities of the pipelines and pump station, which was, the majority of the time, as you look at this graph, you're operating in the 1 MGD range. But at that peak moment, when you have a rain event, you must move 8 MGD from your collection point up to the top of the hill. And that design point significantly impacts the size and layout of the pipelines. Once that is the beginning point of the discussion, you then need to move that flow back down the hill to discharge to the ocean or use beneficially as in the form of the indirect puddle reuse project. And so, you, once you have all four of those capacities, you then can utilize those to optimize the size of your pipeline. And the key point in the pipeline optimization process was to identify the amount of impact area that we would have to have available to select a pipeline route. So in this particular case, you'll see here a basic layout of what we believe is going to be the layout of the trenches. You'll see the two force mains that will be used to move wastewater up to the water reclamation facility. You have a brine pipeline that'll be used in those conditions to move the, to bring the treated water back down to the ocean outfall. And then you have a indirect puddle reuse line that will allow you the option to move treated water and recharge and use that, as you're well aware of how this process works. So, once we had this corridor, this 12-foot-wide corridor that we knew we needed along the alignment, we then went through a very detailed route analysis. How do we get from point A to point B? So we developed first, a working alignments. And the reason we didn't, we weren't able to jump to a detailed analysis of every working alignment was because we knew that there would be specific, kind of fresh ideas that we wanted to hash out and confirm they were feasible before we moved to a very detailed analysis. And so we did an initial major criteria and constraints assessment. We fatal flawed certain alignments due to their, due to specific items, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail here in a moment. And then we took certain final alignments to the next phases of assessment and determined a preferred alternative. So what I want to bring to you now is kind of a set of seven slides here that kind of shows pictorially why each alignment was either moved to the next phase or not, because we recognized that there were two alignments generally shown in the original EIR, which was an east alignment and a west alignment. They were generally described as west of Highway 1 and east of Highway 1. And what we wanted to make sure is, we looked at those alternatives, as well as kind of reopened the box of potential alternatives. Let's make sure we're not missing a particular alignment that would be very beneficial and hadn't been analyzed in detail. So you'll see here, the cyan line and the green line generally represent the east and west alignment, and then the red, purple, and black lines and the dark blue lines represent some alternatives that we looked at. And I'm going to take you through each one of these. So the west alignment, which generally goes along Tascadero from west to east, south down the bike path, along the Highway 1 alignment, then crosses Main Street and goes up to Quintana Road, and then moves down Quintana Road through the traffic circle, all the way to South Bay Boulevard, and then along South Bay Boulevard to the east underneath Highway 1 and to the water reclamation facility. The key piece of information in the initial assessment is hydraulics. And the reason for that is pumping over, basically when pumping material, you have to get, you have to pump against a static head, which is, how high do I have to pump it? And then what's the length of pipe I have to pump it within? And those two things play a key role in sizing what type of facility you're going to have. So you can see that the west alignment was 17,000 feet and had to get over a hill of about 155 feet, which is at Loma, basically on Quintana Road, approximately. So we then took a look at the east alignment that was laid out in the EIR. And what you'll immediately see from this is two key factors I want to hit on, and that, actually three, is that to open-cut this alignment, in other words, we talked about a trench being, say, five to eight feet deep, the constructibility of that type is very typical for pipeline construction. To do it along the proposed east alignment would have required crossing a hill 220 feet in elevation. It would have added, you know, approximately 75 feet to the top of the hill we had to pump over. That significantly impacts the size and feasibility of the pumping option. We also had four major drainages to cross, as you can see moving kind of from right to left on the page. And lastly, the Morro Creek crossing is in a very tight corridor. In other words, if we went underneath on Tascadero, east underneath, transitioning to Highway 41, and then south on Main Street, right there, there's a constraint where you have to cross Morro Creek. And that, those three issues on an open-cut alignment for the east alignment made it a fatal flawed condition. It was not feasible to construct that project. So we looked at an alternative to this. We recognized that, looking for ways to get out of right-of-bays that would be significantly impacting operations of your roadway and your businesses, we wanted to look at every opportunity to minimize that. And what we found was a combination of the west and east alignment, which was basically use the west alignment to get across Morro Creek, get to Main Street, go under Highway 1, and then go through the Radcliffe neighborhood, and then along Highway 1, along the original east alignment. And we still had the two major issues, which was the hill we had to get under or over, and the four drainages we had to cross. And so there is a methodology called trenchless construction, where you can drill underneath those facilities. And what we found was those crossings, and there's two shown on this alternative, are 1,500 feet and 2,500 feet in length. And because you've got four different pipelines, and each one of those are limited in how they can be in close proximity to one another due to the division of drinking water requirements, you are looking at a cost impact for this option of between $3 and $4 million, additional to what's already listed. So this, because of that issue, and I will add to this, you've got a pipe that's 220 feet deep on the second of the two alignments, and you've got construction risks anytime associated with horizontal directional drilling for this long of a pipeline, so 1,500 feet and 2,500 feet in length. And because of those constructibility issues, cost, depth, operations, we eliminated this east alignment from the options. So, once we were there, we started to look at very outside-the-box options, and the reason was, we knew now that the east alignment was a potential, it was fatally flawed, due to those reasons I've identified. So we started to go way outside the box and said, okay, what if we went near where the, what's called the, you know, east along Highway 1, and then crossed through the potential injection, east injection site, went under the Morro and Little Morro Creek confluence, and then took an overland route that minimized how much right-of-way we impacted? And that's what's shown here as the hills-creek alignment. But what you can immediately see is, we have to cross a hill that's almost 305 feet in height, so now we're almost 160 feet higher than the west alignment. So from a hydraulic standpoint, that was a nonstarter. So the second option, well, could we tunnel this? Yes, you could tunnel this, but it would be one of a single project in the United States that hasn't been done. It is a possible, but it would be on the order of magnitude of $20 million to complete that construction. It is a large tunneling project. It's what you would do for a railroad. You could potentially do it with HDD, but you're still in the same boat. It's a significant cost increase on the order of $10 million. So $20 million to tunnel it, $10 million to horizontal directional drill it, in addition to what we've already listed on our other alternatives that did make it to the final analysis. And that's, we were attempting to look for every option that we could get through this alignment in a cost-effective and constructible manner. So then we looked at, what if we did a shorter alignment and tried to go through the Radcliffe neighborhood again, and then do that same horizontal directional drilling length? And we ran into the same concern. Hydraulically, we couldn't get over the hill open-cut, so we were looking at a trenchless option, and immediately see that we're back to the long trenchless option, which is a significant cost impact. So, once we had looked at all those east alignments, we also looked at an alternative on the west side of Highway 1, and that was to go basically along Embarcadero, and then east to west through the city, and then in this opportunity, we would miss the Quintana Corridor. There were some potential benefits associated with this. It did not hydraulically fail, because it's relatively the same elevation. It had some constraints, but we saw that there was nothing that fatal flawed this alignment. So we took both the west alignment and the Embarcadero alignment through to further analysis. And what we did was, we developed basically a ranking protocol that looked at several key constraints and design criteria, and ranked those two projects against one another. As you can see, and as was noted on the length, the, on the presentation slide for the Embarcadero alignment, it's 20,000 feet in length, so it's 3,000 feet longer than the west alignment. And so for that reason, you get to a bottom line where the west alignment ranks higher from the constraint standpoint, and is also a less expensive project at 13.9 million. And that is why we moved forward with a preferred pipeline route alternative of the west alignment. Once we had the alignment selected or identified as the most likely potential, we looked at, how did that alignment impact the pump station? This actually happened somewhat in parallel, because we didn't know at the time for sure the western Embarcadero alignment would be selected. We wanted to make sure we understood the pumping impacts. In other words, how big is the station going to be? How many pumps were we going to need? What kind of footprint would we impact? And so, with that in mind, we took the final alignments through a pump station analysis process very similar to what we did with the force mains, identifying design criteria and constraints that had to be assessed. So one new item that came up was the original plan for pumping your wastewater up to the water reclamation facility was a single pump station. And as you can see on the left-hand side of this presentation, you have basically four, what we call sewer basins, basically where flow comes from within your city. And at the small green facility next to the insignia LS3, which represents lift station number three, you have three lift stations within the city now, lift station 1, 2, and 3. And lift station 3 is over, basically on the corner of South Bay Boulevard and Quintana Road. And there's a small sewage basin there. And you pump that up and into the yellow-colored area, which was, is basically a gravity flow system. So all flow by gravity, down Quintana Road, under Main Street, down Main, under Morro, across Morro Creek, and east, excuse me, west on Tascadero, and to the treatment plant. So that's a gravity flow. So we pump, lift station 3 pumps up. So we pump, lift station three pumps up, and then it flows by gravity to the treatment plant. The blue area where LS2 is listed, that area is basically the Embarcadero portion of the city. It goes to lift station two, and then pumps from a station two to your water facility now. And then the whole north side of town, which is shown in red, flows by gravity with some small portion picked up by what's called lift station one, and flows to the treatment plant. So the idea was let's take the same location we have at the water treatment plant, build a large pump station and pump everything up the hill. What we found was by identifying a second pump station, we could better utilize the existing infrastructure that the city has, as well as minimize the hydraulic impacts to the pump station sizing. In other words, with a single pump station, you were looking at eight pumps, two of them 60 horsepower, six of them 250 horsepower, and five of those pumps would basically sit unused for 99.9% of the year. Secondarily, with a dual pump station, you're looking at two very typically designed pump stations, very similar to what you have now in your system. And those pumps would only have two pumps that have basically a limited operation over that same 99.9%. You'd have three 60 horsepower pumps at the one station, and three 250 horsepower pumps at the second station. They would be operated more consistently. The other benefit of this, you're moving a considerable amount of your infrastructure. The single station has all of that infrastructure down near the beach in the inundation zone, whereas now we'd be able to move a portion of that infrastructure away from the beach and out of the inundation zone. And so you can see we did an analysis of several key criteria and constraints related to this part of the project, ranked them, and you can see that the dual station ranked higher. Now, one question that immediately we want to address is why two stations is less expensive than one? And I think one of the key points I want to reiterate was the amount of unused infrastructure for a large single station requires a different kind of design. Instead of a standardized small, relatively small wet well with what they call submersible pumps, it's a smaller footprint for construction, whereas a single station that would require eight pumps, five of them with limited use, would require that you have dry pit access. In other words, you can get to those pumps in a dry condition, and you're only extending the inlet for those pumps into the wet conditions. And that structure is significantly more impactful in the hardest part of your alignment to build. In other words, the geotechnical conditions in close proximity to the beach are very difficult to build in. And so that single structure becomes much more costly from a capital cost standpoint. And that's why from a single versus two pump station design, you've got a more expensive option as the single. So I wanted to give you kind of a quick rendering of what these facilities might look like. So this is a view of pump station A located along Tascadero just to the east of the current water reclamation, wastewater treatment plant. And on the two right sides, you see the plan view, kind of where is it located? On the bottom right, that's what the current site looks like. And then on the left is kind of a visualization of this. Of course, we're at 25% design on the lift station, which where we know the size of it it'll need to be, and we've got a pretty good general layout, but this shows you kind of trying to attempt to let you see what the visual impact of the structure would be. The second location, which is basically at the Main Street and Highway One intersection, you have a secondary station that would utilize an existing city parcel to build, again, a pump station very similar to your current pump station designs, a submersible pump station. And what you see here is kind of a representation of that, a single building for an electrical and controls, and an emergency generator. And then this particular site may or may not have to be raised a small amount to match the existing grade that the next-door buildings are to keep a consistent view in that area, as well as deal with any potential drainage issues, because there is a drainage that runs on the backside of this site. So that's what we wanted to provide, was a general layout of the facilities. You have that. And, you know, just like to summarize here with the preferred alternative being the west alignment with the dual pump station. And in this figure, you can see there are two additional benefits. Lift station three, that originally we talked about would have pumps currently over onto Quintana and goes all the way down, we could now direct, connect lift station three into our preferred alignment. So that's one benefit. And in addition, lift station two, that currently crosses Morro Creek and gets all the way to the wastewater treatment plant via a force main, that force main can be redirected directly into our new force main, and that would allow us to provide additional redundancy as well as operational benefits for lift station two. So I appreciate the time. I believe Eric's now going to give us some more details.
Thanks, Mike. So in response to some of the comments that we received at the WRF CAC meeting, I wanted to talk a little bit about the project that we're discussing here, and some of the differences that you may see between what was included in the final EIR and what we're talking about here tonight. And I want to reiterate, these are revisions to the project that was included in the final EIR. Normal design revisions that we would see in any large capital project where we're progressing the design. And there's really, really four separate items that I wanted to talk about here briefly. The first one is the east injection site routing. And so the figure that's shown up here is taken from the final certified EIR, and shows the pipeline over to the east injection area going down Arle. We've taken a look at that, and Mike and his design team have determined that the best way to route that pipe would be up along Tascadero Road, so east in Tascadero Road, and then down south to that east injection area. And so there's a slight deviation from exactly what's shown in the final EIR. The second component is the Lila Kaiser rerouting. So you may remember, following the presentation of the final EIR, I believe, to the planning commission, we were, we received some correspondence from the Northern Chumash Tribe, and Mr. Collins had requested that we look at rerouting the pipeline so it does not go through Lila Kaiser Park, which is an area that's sensitive in terms of archaeological and cultural significance. And so in working with Caltrans, we identified that we would like, we could, we could use their right-of-way and stay out of Lila Kaiser Park. And so that was something that we're currently looking at moving forward with at this time. The third revision is the second pump station. And so the timing of the certification of the final EIR, and when we identified the dual pump station, both of those things were kind of happening at the same time. And so made the decision to move the EIR forward with the single pump station, continue to look at this, and now we're proposing the dual pump station as the best option. Number one, because of the reduced cost and also improved operability. And then the fourth item is the removal of a trenchless crossing there at the very southern portion of the alignment. So the original concept was that we would do a trenchless crossing of Highway One, and then run in Teresa Boulevard and up to the new WRF site. In talking with Caltrans, we identified that we could open cut the crossing and go down South Bay Boulevard and cross under Highway One without, without doing a trenchless crossing. Couple of benefits there, there were some utility conflicts in Teresa, as well as some issues with a culvert there on Highway One, where Caltrans has had problems with that facility in the past. And so these are the four different elements that we wanted to highlight here tonight. A couple of things to note, the environmental document did consider the areas associated with a number of these. So for example, the second pump station site, the archaeological report that was done to support the final EIR had considered that area covered by that site in that report. And another thing to note is that existing site, it was not included in the biological assessment, but it's a paved, it's a paved site that's been disturbed, so not a lot of impact from, or not a lot of potential issues from biological resources there. So just wanted to highlight those things because they were discussed previously at the WRF CAC meeting. We can discuss more during the QA process, or excuse me, during question and answer about our proposed approach in terms of moving, moving forward. There was, that was alluded to in the staff report. We'll talk really quickly here about budget. The first element that I did want to talk about, and this has to do with budget, but it's a little bit of good news that just happened very recently, which we received our final scoring from the state on the SRF program. We received that on January 17th. This has been a bit of an iterative process back and forth between city staff and the folks there at the state. They're changing the SRF process pretty significantly in that there's a scoring that's given to each project. They identify a cutoff score, and that's who, that's how they determine who gets on the fundable list for the upcoming, the upcoming fiscal year. So the maximum scoring that any project can receive, it's 17 for a potable, or excuse me, for a potable water project, 16 for a delta water quality project, and a maximum total score of 14 for a recycled water project. And again, based on our final scoring, we're receiving, excuse me, a score of 14, which is the maximum score that a project of this nature can receive. In terms of next steps, we're waiting, beginning of April, the state is supposed to make the final determination on who exactly is going to go on to the funding list. And so we have a complete application, and we've done everything we need to do from a technical standpoint in regards to the SRF. This budget breakdown was included in the staff report, and I just wanted to note this as we move forward and talk about different components of the project, specifically the conveyance facilities. We talked a little bit about some of the costs tonight, and I also wanted to note that as we move forward with the design build project, we get further along in the design process, identify any changes, it's important to note the cost and how the costs in the $126 million budget are attributed to the different components of the project. And so you can see that breakdown here, and that's included in the packet as well as in the staff report. In terms of budget, I just wanted to show here the planned spending for the $126 million budget throughout the course of the roughly four-year project period through fiscal year 21, or 21, 22, which shows that our current spent to date is about 5.8 million. That was based on the latest information from, from the finance department. Again, tonight, we're asking for you to receive the status report for the WRF, specifically identified in those different items listed below, as well as the specific action that we're requesting, which is the resolution number 819, authorizing staff to complete and submit an application to LAFCO for a sphere of influence designation for the approximately 400-acre TRIW site near South Bay Boulevard, and annexation of the 27.6 acres of that property as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Casares and Mr. Fisher, for that enlightening presentation and very technical presentation. I'm sure there are a number of questions, and we'll start with council questions. And so who'd like to start us off with questions?
I would be willing to start.
Certainly, Marla, let's go ahead.
Okay, all right. And part of this is just for the sake of the public to understand exactly what's being asked of us, especially the decision we're being asked to make tonight. Could you please explain why, well, you said that we're applying for a status of a sphere of influence status, but what is the likelihood of getting that designation?
The only indication that I have for LAFCO's position on this is LAFCO did submit a letter to the draft, in response to the draft environmental document. And in that letter, it talked about their process for a sphere of influence application and annexation application. They also provided some draft language, asking to revise the language to not include the sphere of influence, the application for the sphere of influence for the 400-acre parcel. But again, the MOU is pretty clear that the city has agreed to make that application.
So we're doing it primarily because we said we would do it, but LAFCO has basically indicated that they are not looking favorably on that change in our status.
Yeah, outside of, outside of that particular instance in their response to the draft environmental document, it looks to be, that looks to be the case.
And it, as I understand, Mr. Graham is, probably could answer this question. In the general plan update, what is the land use designation for that?
It's a public facility just for the area where the plant would be located. I would also note that in the LAFCO's 2017 sphere update, they made the same comments in that document that Mr. Casares referenced in relation to the EIR, that they were not in favor or did not support annexation of a larger parcel, TRIW parcel.
But what is, what have we basically said? Let's say that they granted it to us, what does our general plan suggest about that land, or how is it currently designated?
In the draft, in the current general plan, it's in the county. In the draft general plan, the portion where the treatment plant would sit, the 20-something acres, that is identified as a public lot, a public government lot. And then the remainder of it is, remains in the county, but is within the city's planning area.
And designated as agriculture?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And have you been in communication with the coastal commission staff regarding a consolidated permit, so that we have a sense that they are okay with that?
Yes. I think part of the reason why we're looking at going in this, going down this path, is initial conversations with coastal staff didn't necessarily imply that we, they would be in favor of a consolidated permit. And so, once we started talking about timing and looking at the revised, kind of revised project schedule based on when the contract was executed with, with the design build team, we started to look at how that schedule plays out over the rest of the course of this year. Coastal staff then made it apparent that they would be in favor of a consolidated permit. Likely, if the project was appealed, if we went through the county process and the project was appealed to, eventually to the coastal commission, coastal commission would want to see the whole project. And so this is another way of us making this project a little bit more efficient, because if we were to just go down the path of trying to get the WRF site permitted through the county, we could go to that, we could go down that path and eventually get to a place where now we're going to the coastal commission, and we've got to add a bunch of additional stuff to the application to cover the other portions of the project.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, how have the design build workshops gone? Have there been any changes that have, or any issues that have come out of the workshops that we should be concerned about?
I think that the design build workshops have been going very well, and exactly how we would want them to go. There was a very specific project that was identified in the RFP that the design build team responded to, and that, that request in the RFP, and the project that came back and the costs associated with it is very specific. And we've spent the last several months working with them and looking at ways to either add things to the project, optimize components of the project, or take things out of the project. So we have a running list of about two dozen items that we're tracking right now, and we should be ready to, again, right around the first of March, be able to bring those to WRF CAC and then on to.
So you think that this timeline is, timeline is realistic?
I think so, yes.
Okay. And the location of this second lift station, is that in danger of being flooded at all?
I'll let Rob answer, answer this question.
Yeah, okay.
It is in, a portion of the site is identified as being in the 100-year flood plain. Our flood damage prevention regulations and FEMA's regulations allow construction in those areas as long as certain provisions are followed. Construction has of, things that could be damaged in a flood need to be elevated above that base flood elevation. base flood elevation, and in our local regulations, we require an additional two feet of freeboard. So, things would be elevated, electrical, mechanical components would be elevated two feet above that base flood elevation. The area is known as an undesigned A-zone. There has been no elevation set, so part of this project will be to establish those flood elevations so we can determine what that base flood elevation is, so we can construct that.
So you would take that into consideration in the actual design of the building itself?
That's correct.
Okay.
I just want to point out that the property next door that was recently developed as the Lima store was also in a similar situation, and their finished floor is above the 100-year flood elevation. So, being adjacent like that, the amount of impact would be very similar to that elevation.
Okay. And can you describe the steps that you've taken, or how you intend to deal with the issue of the pipeline route in terms of the businesses there, and how that construction will proceed to take into account their concerns?
We're going to be looking at those in a lot more detail as we move, if we move past the 30% design. So, as, you know, tonight, we're really looking to move forward in terms of the dual pump station option, the west alignment, and things like the dual force main, and then take those concepts and start to finalize the construction documents. We're going to be getting into a lot more detail in terms of traffic control plans and those types of things, and so we'll have a little bit better idea of what's going on. We have a number of things that we also need to do in terms of surveying and geotechnical work and potholing to figure out where exactly some of those utility conflicts are, and we'll know exactly where in the roadway that trench alignment's going to be. So we'll be better able to answer those questions as we move that portion forward. In addition, we're also looking at formalizing a public outreach approach around those businesses and what that's going to look like moving forward.
Okay.
Additionally, the alignment will be along the easterly side of Quintana that gives us most flexibility to construct through large areas where there are no businesses along there. Like I said, we will, at this point, really can't say we'll guarantee one lane of traffic open, but that's the marching order is given to the design engineer to ensure that that alignment has one lane of traffic open during construction. This is a very wide trench, and I don't want to minimize the impact that will have. It's a big construction project.
Right. But my understanding is that you aren't going to be building it all at once. You're going to be building small segments at a time, so is that correct?
It's a linear project. We're not going to open up the entire length of the project and then plop the pipes in and then backfill the entire. So they'll open up as much they can accomplish in a day's worth of work and complete that work before they progress forward typically.
Right. And you can put plating on top, and you can travel?
Yes, and there may be some instances where, in the active construction area, where the trench will be plated so driveways can be accessed. You'll have to drive across that plating.
Okay. And you did say that we were going to reach out to the businesses and where we would be?
That is correct.
Yep, okay. And are there any changes between this presentation and what was given to WRF-CAC? Any substantial changes that?
I think some of the figures might be slightly modified. We eliminated a number of slides that we presented at WRF-CAC, if you can believe that. And we tried to streamline it a little bit and got more in, focused a little bit more on the process, how this whole thing worked. I think Mike spent a lot of time and effort, kind of going through the thought process and how we arrived at the recommendation that we arrived on it. I don't think that we presented that level of detail to WRF-CAC in terms of the process.
Okay. By the way, I want to thank you for the data, the financial data. That's really very helpful and I think should help to explain exactly where we're at, and I really appreciated seeing it in this presentation. I just have a final question, and I know that we are not being asked as the council tonight to approve the pipeline route and the two lift station solution, but when would we actually make that decision?
We believe that the next step on the pipeline work is, as I mentioned, looking at the final EIR and looking at some of these things that we just talked about, really those four elements. We're actively engaging with ESA, the environmental consultant that prepared the EIR, and we're working with them to identify the scope that they would need to, they need, in order to do the environmental assessment on these different portions of, these four different areas of the project. As we indicated in the staff report, we feel that this would likely result in an addendum to the EIR that would document some of these optimizations of what was presented in that final EIR. At that point, we've been talking this evening about a number of ways that that would progress, and if that would go to Planning Commission, if it would go to council, or how that would move forward and become part of the environmental document.
Just want to add in, at some point in time, we're going to have a set of plans and specs that we'll want to award to a contractor, and council will need to do that. That's when the project gets officially approved, when you authorize that construction. But we need to hear from council if this is something you don't want us to pursue, this alignment in Quintana. We kind of need to know that now before we continue to go along this approach. I mean, we've presented this through the blue ribbon and through the rate analysis. We're checking in with you again to make sure that we're on the right approach.
So you would like direction from council?
Yes, especially if we're on the wrong approach.
Okay.
Thank you, Marlese. Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Can you elaborate on the effect on the EIR of the second pumping station and the any other changes that you are proposing with this approach?
As was mentioned in the staff report, based on an initial assessment by the environmental consultant and then members of the program team, and looking at the studies that have been done to support the biological and archaeological assessments, understanding the nature of that property that we're looking at in terms of that city-owned property that's currently been developed. Our anticipation is that the environmental analysis will be done, and they will find that there are no additional impacts or mitigations that are required. At that point, an addendum would be the appropriate mechanism for documenting those changes and making that part of the final environmental document. If that's not the case, then we'll have to explore and go down another path that may have other impacts on the environmental document. But if we identify no additional impacts or mitigations, then it would be simply moving the, making the amendment part of the final environmental document.
Okay, thank you. And then on the pipeline alignment for piping the recycling water to the east side IPR, that looks as if it's going down the east side of Highway 1? This is the slide?
What page?
Page 18. Yeah. So the proposal is to keep it in the same alignment, in the same basic trench section as all the other pipelines, so it would be in the westerly alignment in Quintana Road until we get to Atascadero Road, Highway 41, and then we would take that injection pipeline to the east.
Okay, I guess what confuses me is that's not the way it's shown in the slide.
Is that the slide with the photo background on it?
Page 18, top revisions to final EIR.
It has yellow stars, looks like cars, Jr.
Four points. You give the four points on final revisions.
You're referring to the figure that was included in the EIR, yeah. So this is what was previously included in the EIR, and is not necessarily what we're proposing now. So the recommended project is, shows the recycled water pipeline, rather than go up the east side of Highway 1, it would go in the west side. So that was, I talked a little bit about when we developed the $126 million budget back in June, we decided to take and incorporate a couple of different things that we thought were going to work out and be our recommendation, our final recommendation, and that included the dual pump station, the west alignment, and the dual force mains. But what we didn't take credit for was we weren't sure that we would be able to fit all of those pipelines together in the same alignment and run them together on the west side of the highway. That was our hope, but we didn't want to make that assumption and be wrong there and reduce our costs, and so we're carrying the higher costs associated with running those two pipelines separately. So that is another, in a sense, that is another change from the final EIR, is that we're now running all those pipes together in one trench versus running one along the west side of the highway and one along the east side of the highway. I think, thank you for asking that question, because I forget that we had that included in the final EIR.
Okay, thanks. And then at the beginning of your presentation, you talked about bringing back potential contract change orders. Are we already looking at potentially changing our contract at this stage?
That's, I guess that's one of the components of the design-build project, or, excuse me, the design-build process. Again, we had a very defined project that was identified that had a very defined cost associated with it. We have the ability to use these workshops to identify any changes, and so we could be looking at, we could be looking at changes to the contractor's GMP that they provided. Now, one of the reasons why I included the budget in the staff report and then included it here in the presentation is that the budget for the WRF project is not $67 million, which is the GMP price that's in the design-build contract. We have contingency in there that we anticipated we would be using some to negotiate some of these changes to the contract.
Okay. And did we also include $1 million for unanticipated EIR impacts?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, we're going to run the pipeline along the bike path next to the PG&E property. Is that correct? Yes, okay. So, do we have the opportunity during that construction to raise the level of the bike path above the flood plain?
Yes, when we put the fill back in there, we'll have material that will need to be used. I think that's an appropriate use for that material, is to raise the elevation of that bike path through that Willow Camp Creek crossing and not have a couple inches of mud on it for several months of the year.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Red. Looking left, right. Questions? Questions?
I've got a few.
Sure. Go ahead. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. Enormous amount of activity, excuse me, information with respect to this project, and I don't know how you guys keep track of it all, to be frank. In looking at this recommendation, it appears to me that you're asking for the approval of Resolution 819, which is the Lafco application.
That's correct.
So if I understand it correctly, there's an MOU. Are there any other contractual agreements between the city and the landowner besides the MOU, or is that the document? Do you know?
I'm trying to think if there are any outside of some normal language around allowing access to, so a couple of things that I key in on when I look at it, access to the site so that we can have the design-build folks on the site.
Yeah, I read that. I'm just wondering if there's any other agreement between the city and owner besides the memorandum of understanding.
There was a number of things around the appraisal and having an appraiser that both parties were.
Yeah, that's in the MOU.
But I don't know if there are any other.
That's in the MOU. I guess what I'm trying to get at, if Lafco is indicating that they're not thrilled about issuing a sphere of influence for the remainder parcel to 370 acres, does the city go back then and renegotiate with the owner of the property? Because it does seem to be contingent upon that happening.
No, the MOU language is pretty specific about that. It requires us to make application. We could not guarantee that what Lafco's action would take place, so we'll satisfy the requirement for making application, but, like I said, that is a deliberating body of elected officials, and we could not make guarantee of what would happen with that. And there are no other written or verbal agreements with the property owner pertaining with the site.
So the property owner would then go ahead and do the appraisal and sell the property to the city?
Yes.
For the annexation needed for the plant?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, there's an enormous amount of information here, and there's also quite a bit of information in the staff report. What are we calling the status update? Is it this, or is it this, or is it this combined?
I guess you could consider it the two combined. I don't, maybe with the exception of the updated news on the SRF and just recently receiving that information, and there's, the presentation has more information than the staff report, but it's all based on the information that's presented in the staff report around those different topics.
Okay. Just as a general point, Mr. City Manager, I've talked to you about hoping to have these in advance when we get the agenda. It's an enormous amount of information for us to absorb at first glance. I think receiving it is one thing, but having a thorough review and giving lengthy comments to what is a very complex document requires more time on the council's part before we can say that that's really been completed. To talk about the alignments for a second, if we could, the different options. So, if I understand you correctly, and the level of detail that you've gone to investigate this is very appropriate, and I greatly appreciate the efforts. I just want to make sure I understand the two east alignment options. Now, it looks like from the little map, this is on page 12 of the PowerPoint, it looks like the middle little map shows the piping going along Highway 1 on the east side. Is that correct for both of those east alignments? The east alignment as well as the east-west alignment?
Yep. You can make it.
So which one? I can't quite see from here. Which one is that?
So, this is the east open cut alignment?
East open cut alignment, okay. So I see that. So does the pathway follow Highway 1 on the east side of Highway 1, or is it more of an overland route? I can't quite tell from the map. I can't quite tell from the map that's here.
Yeah, really fair question. So we have a very detailed layout of this particular alignment. It would go east on Atascadero, under Highway 1, then turn south on Main Street. And you're coming down Main Street and you'll know there's the bridge right there. And that particular, what was the constraint I was talking about? The right-of-way between Caltrans and existing private property. All you have is that bridge. And the intent would be to try to cross Morro Creek there, but that was one of the fatal flaws. There was not a way to get a pipe bridge or a crossing of Morro Creek there in any type of trenchless or other opportunity because the bridge itself sits on piles. So your trenchless options for crossing the creek are limited. So then if we would have been able to get over the creek, we then would have continued along Main Street and then up through the Radcliffe neighborhood and along Highway 1. Is that sufficient detail?
Yeah, probably more than I understand, but I appreciate it. And then the one below, the east HDD, what does the HDD stand for?
So that's a type of trenchless construction called horizontal directional drilling.
Okay, thank you. And was any, I believe that anything is possible if you have enough money. Have you done a cost comparison between either of these east alignments at all with the west alignment?
So we, in completing the conceptual design report, the cost analysis related to the two Embarcadero and West alignments is extremely detailed. It goes down to individual pieces and parts of the alignment. What we did do from a high-level analysis in the fatal flaws phase is look at what would the cost of those HDDs be, those particular drives be compared to the other. And in these particular interests, a 1,500-foot HDD and a 2,500-foot HDD will be on the order of three to four million dollars in excess of what's already shown in your cost estimate. So you're looking at an increase of three to four million dollars.
So the three to four million is the delta between one of the east alignments and the west alignment?
Yes, the west alignment and east alignment.
Okay. In terms of cultural resources, are they equivalent on both sides in terms of what you might run into? Or do you know, is it pretty much just unforeseen? We start digging and see what we run into, how does that work?
John, can you address some of the questions about the
Hi, John Rickinbach. Yeah, they're essentially equivalent. The major cultural resource issues really had more to do with the area near Highway 1 and 41 in that area and near Lila Kaiser Park, but the alignments are essentially similar.
Okay. Let's see, what did I want to ask here? Would it be possible to get, it seems like every time I get information, there are more pipes being put in the ground. That may or may not be true, but that's kind of the gut feeling I have about it. Would it be possible to get a scale drawing through Quintana showing the piping, where it's going to be? And a little more detail in that regard?
Absolutely. We have a more detailed trench section drawing that we presented to WRF CAC and opted for this presentation to have kind of the more conceptual cartoonish one on there. But yeah, I can get you that for sure.
Sure, that'd be great. Regarding the height, Mr. Leibig, you talked about putting the pump station two feet above the base flood elevation. The city, I think, has a climate action plan. Given the recent information about climate change, do you think the two foot is sufficient? I mean, what do you base, what is the two foot above floodplain based on at this point?
Two feet above base flood elevation is based on our own local ordinance. The base FEMA requirements are at or above the base flood elevation. The city chose to be more conservative and add two feet of freeboard to that base flood elevation. With the, really a selfish reason is it reduces flood insurance costs citywide. We get a better insurance rating for our community by having provisions above and beyond what the FEMA minimum is.
Okay. Question about design capacity. I'm always confused how you design a hydraulic system like this when you have some existing pipes that leak or allegedly leak. How do you figure out what the design capacity is or needs to be for this system?
We took, the design capacity for the treatment plant has been looked at for a number of years, going back almost 10 years to the development of the previous master plan in 2007. The city has a network of its own meters as well as as part of the One Water Plan. The city decided to do a rigorous flow monitoring study and looking at the actual flows within the collection system and then developing a model for the collection system based on that flow metering information. So you're right, there are, there are pipes in the city system which get flow from INI or inflow and infiltration. And that's built into the model. So the assumption is that for the design of the pipelines and the pump stations, that the level of INI that those facilities will see is the level that they're currently experiencing now. And that's the way that, that's the way that the design is done.
So that's a pretty conservative approach. Would you say that if they, if the pipes that leaked were replaced and fixed, the design capacity would be, would be less? Require less capacity?
The design capacity could be reduced somewhat if you were able to reduce the amount of INI. But the reality is even with an extremely rigorous replacement program, the city's still going to experience a good amount of INI and that, those projects would take a long, long time. And because of the nature of the city and the nature of the system, we're not talking about a growth-type situation, meaning we're not building a treatment plant or a conveyance facility that's sized for some future condition. We're designing this collection, this collection system, the design is driven by that peak wet weather flow. And so that peak wet weather flow has nothing to do really with the amount of people in town. And it has everything to do with, as we said, the INI and the design storm that the city might see. And so this facility could, it's a little bit of a different, of a mind shift in the way a number of, a lot of treatment plants are constructed where there's a growth component to it. But when this facility goes online in 2022, the second day the facility goes online, we could see a flow event of 8.14 MGD potentially as a result of wet weather. And so it's the nature of the timing of the project and we need to design for that capacity because it's a flow that we could see right away.
Okay. This is a little bit off topic, but not too much. The well injection testing for the reclaimed water portion of the project, can you tell us the status of that?
Yeah, so the GSI, the HydroGeo consultant, is currently working on the revisions of their model. We are anticipating that, the "we" meaning the city staff, would see a draft report towards the end of February. So that would be the first, the first item that they're working on. They've also installed transducers in the seawater wells that the city has for its D-SAL facility to be able to look at the fluctuating levels in those wells. And so they've installed those transducers and the plan is that those transducers would be in place for, I believe, a number of years to get data on the fluctuating levels in those seawater wells. Another component of the project or of the work that they're doing is they're going to be doing some initial geotechnical investigations in the Narrows area to get a little bit more information about the underground conditions and the suitability of injection at that particular location. And then finally, the other item that's in their scope is the actual drilling of the test injection wells. Right now, backing into a schedule, that process could take place around the April or May time period. So once they've finished the additional modeling work that they're doing, once they go and do some of the CPT or the GeoTech work that they need to do in the Narrows, then they'll be ready to move forward with getting the permits that they need and going and drilling those tests, identifying the exact test well locations and then drilling those test wells. And that's, based on our conversations with them, that's around the April or May time period.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis.
What has been or will be the outreach to Lemos for the second pump station since it's part of the public discourse?
That's something that we would include in our public outreach plan. So something that we also wanted to discuss a little bit was the addition of a new team member to our team in the form of Katz and Associates, who's going to be assisting the program team in the city with public outreach efforts going forward, focusing on, we have a number of different focus areas, but that particular, that particular element could be a portion of what we're calling the outreach plan. And we're in the process of just kicking off the development of that plan that would identify what outreach efforts we're going to be undertaking here in the short term and then also in the long term with the duration of the project.
And then on the negotiation of the change orders, is that Corolo negotiating on the behalf of the city to bring the cost of the change orders down from Long Blacken Beach?
So the way that that process is going to work is as we identify changes or additions or deletions to the project as it was currently contracted, the design-build team comes up with a very raw order of magnitude cost estimate. We look at that raw order of magnitude cost estimate and we decide if we want to move forward and evaluate that change in any more detail. And in a number of instances, we look at the cost estimate and based on that cost, as staff, we don't, we don't think we want to pursue that. It's too large of a change or we don't need, it's not worth making that change. So once we get through that initial step and they say, okay, here's the raw order of magnitude, we say, okay, we want you to evaluate these in a little bit more detail. Then they'll go through and they'll put together a detailed cost estimate. Once they put together that detailed cost estimate, then it comes to the program team in Corolo and will do a detailed evaluation to essentially vet those numbers and make sure that those numbers are fair and accurate.
Sorry. And then on the second pump station, is there additional traffic disruption besides just putting in the trenches? Will that affect traffic at all on that additional pump station? It looks like it's off the street far enough, but
It is off the street. And again, that's something that we'll be looking at in a little bit more detail as we move on to the 60% design and looking at the traffic control plans. But you're right, there is a 12-foot diameter, excuse me, 12-foot wide trench that's going to be going right there in front of that area as well. And there is, there is some space there for laydown and so that's something that we'll be looking at.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thanks for meeting with me earlier today, I appreciate it. Just a couple of additional questions. Thank you for the great questions all around, I appreciate that. Page five of the overhead presentation. What would happen if the city did not comply with the MOU requiring the city to make application for LAFCO? Possibly.
We'll let Chris jump in here, but I assume that we would be in breach of our agreement and we may have to renegotiate that agreement.
I would have to take a look and see what the penalties are actually specifically in there. And I could get back to you on that.
For the audience's sake, maybe the folks that are watching, could you just give us a difference in the definition of sphere of influence versus annexation? And what that implies for the city and to the city with regard to control abilities to manage, et cetera, et cetera?
I'll give it a shot and Scott can correct me. Sphere of influence, the property jurisdiction remains in the county, but it's intended to, at some point in time, come into the city. Annexation, it becomes part of the city's corporate boundary and subject to the city's rules and regulations.
Okay. Any historical observations with regard to the local LAFCO and their frequency of changing their mind with regard to significant statements that they've made? In other words, I'm looking at what is the possibility that should we move forward, or we do move forward with this process and look to get an increase in our sphere of influence as per the MOU, that LAFCO might change their mind? I mean, is that, that might not be a fair question, but is there a history of that happening that we know of?
I don't have that much familiarity with the, annexations don't happen all the time. So maybe Scott might have some additional information.
I mean, every opportunity they've had to weigh in on this project, they've said they're not in support of annexing the larger piece of property. I can't take it for anything else other than what they've told us. And I wouldn't imagine they're going to back dramatically off that position.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. Page number seven. The way I read this, consolidated permit approach. There's a possibility of hitting a deadline of October 19, which would require a renegotiation of guaranteed maximum price for construction and a price escalation possibility. Am I reading it correctly?
That's correct, yeah.
That's correct. And that could be significantly costly to the city?
That's correct.
Okay. And approach that you have at the bottom of the page, the consolidated approach going to the Coastal Commission shaves six months off of the process. Significant cost decreases and gives us a significant window, I assume, of opportunity not to run into that deadline and have that cost escalation occur.
That's correct. So in order to start construction, not only do we need the coastal development permit, we would need any necessary grading or essentially grading permit in order to start construction as well. So not only, and there's a little bit of discussion about how that grading permit or whether the city would require, would need that grading permit to start construction. But if you take that October 2019 date that we're showing here and then add that on as well, we would be looking at getting very close to that 12-month deadline. I will mention, and I don't want to speak out of school here because I don't have the DB agreement in front of me, but there are provisions in the DB agreement that if escalation does hit a certain point during the 12-month period, before the 12-month period is over, for any reason, it's indexed off of ENR, then there could be the opportunity to increase the design build price even before the 12-month period. So it really behooves the city to be able to move this permitting process forward as quickly as possible.
And what's current ENR this last year?
I don't, I don't know what the year-to-year is for it. And I can't remember if it's 20 cities or if it's Los Angeles or San Francisco or what we're using to index in the agreement, but it's all spilled out in the agreement.
Great. Does the accelerated process through the Coastal Commission avoiding the county potentially cut down on the opportunity for public input from members of our community?
No, I think that when we look at this and realizing that we're going to get probably some significant input along the way, I think the likely, what likely would happen is this would be appealed to the Coastal Commission anyway, as we mentioned. And I would say that by driving this to, through the consolidated pathway, having the hearing in April, the hearing would actually be geographically closer to the city. And so I don't think that there's an impediment to the public input process.
Okay, thank you for that. Possibly a question for Mr. Fisher, but I'll reserve whoever wants to make the decision to chime in on that. And I'm going to move quickly to page 14. If I read it correctly, the final alignment assessment after you've ruled out given fatal flaws and all of the other analysis, which is easy to understand and with the presentation clarified very well. In essence, the two projects in terms of pipe alignment that are most feasible would be the Embarcadero and Quintana, in essence, and I'm just calling them those. And the Quintana project would be significantly less expensive. Is that, am I reading, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. And would the added expense, if we even looked at the Embarcadero, I'm not suggesting And would the added expense, if we even looked at the Embarcadero, I'm not suggesting that we do, would that put us over the contingency?
I would need to go back and take a look at the specifics there.
Possibility?
There's a possibility there. As I mentioned, we're now making the assumption that we're going to be running the potable reuse line potentially with, we're likely going to be running the potable reuse line within the same trench. I need to look at how that impacts the costs as well as this. There's also some assumptions there about the different reuse locations, if we're on the west side or the east side. But I can get back to you with that. I can take a look at that.
Okay. And although page 16 appears to be counterintuitive, I just want to make sure that I'm reading it correctly and that the public understands it. And that is, an additional pump station in the scenario and all the hydraulic work that you've done and all the analysis is actually less expensive than the single pump station that we were originally looking at, correct?
That's correct. I think in this particular situation, one plus one does not equal two. And so, we're taking what is a fairly large complicated structure that's being built in an area that's challenging in terms of construction because of the geotechnical conditions and we're replacing it with two smaller, more conventionally constructed lift stations. And so, yeah, you are looking at that correctly and the two pump station option is less expensive.
Okay. Page 18. Obviously, the Chumash tribe and tribal resources are extremely important and I just want to reaffirm that the major issue that has been determined by their folks, the tribal evaluators, is that the major impacts are along Lila Kaiser and then I heard 41 and 1 and those are being mitigated.
I believe that those are one in the same, as Mr. Rick and Bach had indicated, the area at 41 and 1 is the area of Lila Kaiser Park. So, by staying in the public right of way and then running and going into Caltrans right of way, we would avoid the most sensitive area that was identified by the Chumash.
Okay. Page 19. Thank you for the SRF funding report. This appears to be excellent news. The way I read this, maximizing our score at 14 puts us in a great position for receiving SRF funding. Do we know what the current rate is? Percent rate for funds right now through SRF?
It's, yeah, it's still at 1.7.
I would suspect it would be, but wanted to confirm that. And am I correct in remembering that that assumption of a 1.7% SRF loan was not part of the Blue Ribbon Committee's work that they did when they ended up in rates and this could result in a further reduction in rates if we achieve this?
That's correct. The rate study and the basis of the 218 assumed that we would not be getting the funds from SRF.
If we don't move forward with the basic requests that you've looked at, that we're looking at tonight, in your opinion, are there enough delays that could be built in that could compromise the ability to get SRF funding and potentially reduce rates to ratepayers?
I think that there's the possibility of not getting the SRF funding without moving forward. I think the larger risk lies in not getting to construction as quickly as possible. That would be...
Time is money.
That would be my largest concern at this point in time, knowing that the SRF process, they've got a pretty standardized process in terms of they've let us know that really the first week of April is when we're going to know if we're going to be funded and then the process would proceed from there.
Great. Bottom of page 19. The contractor, GMP, I note in the second large WRF construction bar, you've got contingency built in there. Is it your estimation that the potential changes that might result from the hydraulics and everything that we're looking at tonight would be included in the contingency and that there wouldn't be a further impact on ratepayers?
Based on the discussions that we've had with the design build team, the proposed changes that we've identified, the cost, the updated cost information from Waterworks, we would still be within our $126 million budget in the contingency we'd identified.
Okay. Great. Think that... And thank you for the, oh, I'm sorry. Page 20. The current spend, $5.8 million, that is from project inception until now?
That's correct. So, that's from 2013 up until now. And I think that's, we're still in the process of resurrecting some of the budget numbers from some of those early years in order to have the most accurate where we thought we were going to be versus budget in terms of actual. And so, we're in the process of looking at that. And so, my hope is that when we come back and do an update in February, that we can talk about not only the money that's been spent, but what's been budgeted and how that budget might change moving forward, or how the balance of that budget might change from year to year going forward.
Great. Thank you. So, I'm just going to check in here. We're going to move to public comment. Before I do, I'm going to look for the need for a health check with council. Do you need a health break? Are you okay to move to? Everybody's okay? Then, thank you for that. I'll open it up for public comment. If you'd like to speak on this item, you no need to fill out a public request form. However, I do have one filled out and I'll call Mr. Dan Sedley up first. Dan, come on up. Got your form. Thank you.
My name is Dan Sedley. I am a Morro Bay resident and a member of Citizens for Affordable Living here in Morro Bay. Tonight, in listening to all the detailed reports, although there's a possibility that the WRF remains on the $126 million estimate that we have, there are being mentioned possibilities of overruns already in that amount relating to change orders and to possible delays in contract building. This would be particularly distressing to the citizens of this city, many of whom are already putting their homes up for sale and are having to move because they can't afford the once or twice a year rate increases that are already being imposed upon them. So, it is my most fervent wish that a WRF be built as affordably as possible. This WRF project is the largest and most expensive project ever pursued by the city council and members of the public. I believe that combining five bullets into one comment period is stifling of public comment because there would only be one three-minute comment per public commenter on five subjects instead of three-minute comment on each one of these lengthy and complex subjects. Transparency and communication works in all directions and should not be thwarted. I believe that listing the subjects in the fashion that has been done is a violation of the Brown Act, especially as it pertains to the subjects addressing the coastal commission. Therefore, I believe that C1 should be tabled and re-agendized with each subject listed under its own heading to give the public opportunity to provide adequate and constructive dialogue where the agenda does not currently. Bullet number two. On pages 40, 41, and 42, the agenda references the Tri-W memorandum of understanding and purchasing the 27.6 acres for the actual WRF site and annexing those 27.6 and the sphere of influence for the remainder of the 400 acres of the Tri-W property. This agenda item is incomplete because it does not provide a copy of the Tri-W MOU, which is referenced but is unavailable for review with this agenda. Yet the City of Morro Bay proposes to apply for LAFCO to annex and apply for sphere of influence for the 400 acres. This matter should be tabled until such time that the Tri-W MOU is provided to the public along with this agenda item for consideration as it applies to this proposal. Otherwise, appropriate public comment cannot be made. If the Tri-W MOU was not important, surely it would not be mentioned several times within this C1 section. I am urging tabling this resolution until MOU is provided or the council members vote no on this resolution.
Give you 10 seconds, Dan. Go ahead.
Thank you. I urge tabling this issue until the appropriate documents, specifically the Tri-W MOU is provided with this document, that we, the public, can review it and make appropriate comment, which we can at this time.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Can I just see a number of hands that want to speak for public comment? I see two. Just show me your hands. You don't have to all come up at one time. Three, just four. So, Ms. Holliday, you asked for five minutes. I'm happy to give you that. Okay? Thank you. If you don't have the timer for five minutes, I can set it for five minutes. You do? You, cool. Technology. Go ahead.
Cynthia Holliday.
Welcome.
First, I want to mention the EIR. The finding in the EIR that the plant capacity will have no significant impacts in terms of growth inducing was based on a capacity of 0.97 million gallons per day. Page 17 of the Black and Veatch contract's scope of work states that the plant is designed to treat a peak flow of 8.14 million gallons per day. This is without a doubt a substantial increase in the severity of previously identified significant effects for which a subsequent environmental impact report will be required. It's not just changes that have been made to the project since the Black and Veatch contract. It's about the project that was changed, being changed from the project that was defined in the EIR that you're going to be dealing with. So, you're going to need at least a subsequent, or maybe possibly a supplemental. The next thing I want to ask you or mention to you is that the project isn't going to be completely designed until late March. You're going to have your final design in late March. But you've got the preparation for the application to the coastal commission for January and February, to have that done in February. So, how can you submit your application to the coastal commission before you've got a complete project description that's stable and that you can count on? I think that this timeline is not correct and it is, it will take longer. Also, before the city has the land, the project applicant can't apply. You can't apply for a project permit unless you own the land. Well, you're saying that you're going to have the application to the coastal commission in late February, but the cost assessment hasn't even happened by that time. So, this isn't going to work. It doesn't look like to me. Plus, the city isn't really beholden to that MOU anymore because it expired. That MOU expired, I think it was 45 days after the certification of the EIR. That's the condition of it. So, to say that you are beholden to do this application for SOI is just not true. You don't need to do that. You can buy the property for the full price, which you're going to do anyway, and you don't have to do that. It's expired. It no longer exists. I'd like to know if the injection tests wells show that injection at that site is not feasible? If that would be considered a fatal flaw for this project? And if so, at least for the recycling component of the project? And if so, what would this recycling component look like if there's going to be no injection at that site? Actually, I think that, I think that might be it. Oh, I wanted to point out that we heard some contradictory statements tonight about whether the single pipeline or the double pipeline exists in the original EIR because one person said that the two pipes are already in the EIR for the 120, and also for the $126 million. But the two pipelines aren't in the single, in the EIR and they were not part of the Proposition 218 cost estimate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Feel free to state your name. If not, not a problem.
Good evening. Linda Donnelly.
Hi, Linda. Welcome.
I've realized that tonight, over the listening to all this C1, we've been talking about pipes, poop, and pumping. So, it led me to believe that maybe we could just put the plant up on a four feet high at Hanson and just be done with 100 million of it. Rebuild right there where it exists and we don't have to pump our poop with pipes and trying to figure out where they're going. Okay. And I just wanted to thank this attorney right here for recognizing that Mr. Heller has the right to speak and it's nice to hear what he has to say because I've heard, I've witnessed twice that he has been cut off in the middle of some sentences when he has some information to share with us. Here are my questions. This is regarding Part III, Item C1, direction regarding the consolidated coastal development permit. If the appraisal for the WRF site property is not expected until mid-February 2019, how is it possible to obtain a coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission in early April 2019? Doesn't the city need to show that it actually owns the property for which the permit is being sought? How can the city ask for the California Coastal Commission for a land use permit and/or coastal development permit for all of the project when a portion of the project is within the state highway right of way? Does the city have anything in writing from Caltrans to allow the pipelines in their jurisdiction? How can the city approach any of these agencies without an environmental determination for the revised pipeline route and additional pump station? The updated pipeline route deviates from what is shown in the certified environmental impact report for the project. I wanted to touch a little bit on why the city actually wants an SOI for 400 acres. All we need is 30. We need 30 to build our project. It just reminds me of, maybe it was 2009 when we had a council that was trying to, we had, Tri-W wanted to build a shopping center over there and a lot of us fought against developing that site over there. Makes me think that now we're just trying to develop eventually. We might become Pismo Beach where Mr. Graham actually was and now you know all those homes on the hillside and all that development. You know, we're just looking at a little 30-acre project here. And then I wanted to ask tonight, a couple of people have talked about workshops that were held. What workshops were those and where were they held about this project? That concludes what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name if you please. If not, not a problem.
It's Nancy Best and I'm happy to do it.
Welcome, Nancy.
It really bothers me about this MOU. It was never brought before the public and so we had no input into writing that MOU. We're going to buy that property from Tri-W at an appraised price, which I'm sure is going to be a fair market price. Why did we make an MOU that gives Tri-W so much more by giving them access? What kind of access are you talking about? I know there's a 30-foot wide right of way that's going into there. That's far more than we need to go to the WRF. We're also going to give them the water and sewer, all of the things that we as residents of the City of Morro Bay right now have. You've promised that to them. Why on earth did that MOU promise Tri-W all those things unless you had some sort of a motive to allow them to build hundreds of houses on that property without any public input? We didn't even know about that MOU until quite late. What is the public benefit of that? What is, bears repeating... What is, bears repeating, what is the public benefit of besides buying the property at a fair price to give Tri-W the ability to capitalize millions on that property because we have promised to give them water and sewer utilities and access? Please let me know that. By considering this consolidated permit with the California Coastal Commission, we're definitely cutting out public ability to know what's happening and to dissent if they desire to do so. That pipe that goes up Quintana also will have to be a really big ditch to put those pipes in because we know that that freshwater pipe has to be a certain distance away from those dirty pipes. And so that's going to be a huge process, especially since there's already piping in those that comes from all sorts of places. There's so many questions, and there's no chance for us to really find out the truth.
Thank you, Nancy. Any further public comment? State your name if you desire. If you don't, you don't have to.
Hi, Marla Jo Sadowski.
Welcome, Marla.
North Morro Bay. Thank you. Yeah. You know, most of you up there are old enough to remember 1953, maybe? No?
No.
Okay.
Had to respond to that, sorry.
Abbott and Costello.
Ah.
1953. Who's on first? Remember that one? Okay. Any guys with YouTube out there at home, you can look it up. It's a really good skit. Starts out with, well, I won't do the skit, but who's on first? What's on second? I don't knows on third. Tomorrow's pitching and today's catching. And the public is at bat, and they are totally confused. I don't know why we're not having a public hearing, especially on this MOU. The public doesn't know about it, the general public. People don't know that it's, it's never been presented here. The MOU was signed October 23, 2016, and at that time, Marshall Okelski, who signed the MOU between Tri-W Enterprises, Inc. and the City of Morro Bay, he was the Chair of LAFCO. And this entire MOU document is asking or requiring the city to basically permit facilitate for Tri-W Enterprises, Inc. if we want to buy 30 acres. Okay, we haven't negotiated for that property, yet the city has already been engaged with LAFCO. I mean, this thing about going to complete the permit and make the application. There's a 2017 update from LAFCO, anybody can look it up on the thing, on the Internet, for the City of Morro Bay Sphere of Influence and Annexation. And that update, one of the key things that, why they didn't want to give that SOI is that the land use map in the general plan for Morro Bay did not include that area yet. Well, the update-
Yeah, I have to ask you to, give you 10 seconds to wrap it up. Thanks.
Abbott and Costello. Who's on first? What's on second? I don't knows on third. Tomorrow's pitching, today's catching, and the citizens of this city are confused.
Thank you.
And they're spending a lot of our money.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Who'd like to lead off on deliberation? Let me focus you on two things with regard to the agenda. We have received the update. That's not an action item. We're looking for discussion regarding Item 2 on the staff report, page 39, adoption of the resolution, discussion around that. Three, providing direction regarding consolidated coastal development permit. And we have received the update regarding the conveyance facilities project and program. And so if we could focus our discussion on the two items that we've been asked to consider, and I'll look to anybody who'd like to start with regard to discussion.
I'm wondering if we could have someone address Ms. Holliday's question about the MOU. Has it expired?
Okay.
The MOU has an expiration date that can be pegged upon legal challenges to environmental review. And at this point, we need to do some further review to see whether, under those terms, the MOU as adopted in October 2016 would need to be revisited.
Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you. I'm looking for anybody. I'd be happy to start.
I'm sure everybody would want to talk and discuss this.
I was waiting. Health break time. Thank you, Councilman Heller.
Yeah, I'm looking at Item 2, which is approving, approval of the resolution that's proposed and authorized to the LAFCO application. And I kind of have two sentiments about it. And one is, let's go ahead and do it and get it over with and find out where we stand with this property. However, I do have concerns with respect to what is the public benefit, as one of our public speakers mentioned. What is the public benefit of us granting that SOI to Tri-W properties for the 370 acres? That needs to be clarified before I could support this resolution. As far as Item 3, providing direction regarding staff's pursuit of a consolidated coastal permit, I think it's premature at this point to direct them to do that. Still a lot of questions about that, so those are my comments.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Marla?
Well, I'm certainly prepared to move forward to authorize the annexation of Sphere of Influence change. I'm pretty confident that it's not going to go anywhere, and it will help us to move the process along more quickly. And I'm assuming that it might help if we really do have to renegotiate the MOU, that we actually are adhering to what we originally promised. So I'm prepared to move that. I'm also prepared to support and give direction to staff to have a consolidated coastal development permit. It just makes perfect sense to me. I don't believe that it really cuts down on the public's opportunity to comment. They will have a perfect opportunity to talk right to the Coastal Commission, which would make the final decision anyway on this project. And they don't have to go to several meetings and lengthen the process and cost the project more money if we just go directly to the decision maker and make our case. And if there's an appeal, they can decide. So I'm certainly prepared to do that. I am concerned a bit about, I believe we need to at least give some direction to staff on the conveyance facilities project and program. We need to at least somehow tell them that we support what they're doing and we want them to continue with those options, or we need to take a formal decision on it if that would be necessary. So I would be prepared to, if, and I had the advantage of being at the WRFCAC meeting, so I did see all of the figures in the cost estimates, and they were helpful. So if it would help council to be more confident about that, moving forward with that project, I would recommend that we delay that part of it until perhaps the next meeting. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Looking to my left, discussion?
Yes. I am concerned about whether the option period has expired for the MOU. It says that the option period commences on the effective date of the memorandum and concludes on the 45th day after the earlier of statute of limitations as run on any challenge to the city's approved EIR for the WRF without one being timely filed. It seems to me we are beyond that period. And so my question is, is this a valid MOU? And if it is not, do we need to renegotiate a new MOU? And if we do have to renegotiate a new MOU, I would be in favor of taking out the Sphere of Influence contingency. So Mr. Newmeyer, do you have any thoughts on that?
Whether or not the MOU has expired, if it has, certainly we could seek an extension with Tri-W. And in regards to going to LAFCO, it's not absolutely necessary that we have a current MOU. I mean, we can go to LAFCO and propose an annexation of territory into the city regardless of whether or not we have an MOU that is active. But I do agree that that's something that absolutely needs to be looked into and quickly.
And I question the use of words, "we're not seeking annexation." We're looking at Sphere of Influence, totally separate thing.
Yes.
So I'm not in favor of annexing any of that property. And I don't, yeah, so I guess, I don't know where we stand as far as the Resolution 08-19, whether we are legally required to do that or not.
There's no legal requirement to pass the resolution, but if the resolution isn't passed, then we're not going to officially be moving forward with our application to LAFCO.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But do we have to? If the MOU has expired, do we have to request an SOI, not an annexation?
If the MOU has expired, then we don't have an obligation to do that.
Nor does the property owner have the obligation to sell us the property, which would substantially delay the project because likely we would then pursue eminent domain, which is not a quick process.
So it appears as if, if we want to go to the property owner and renegotiate the option period of the MOU, it's in our interest to conform to the requirements of the existing MOU.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to point out that, you know, the existing MOU provides for a property appraiser to assess the value of the property, which means that, you know, moving forward on whether or not the property is purchased or not, you know, according to the MOU, it's not necessarily a negotiation. It's just an appraisal of the property.
Right, okay. I guess then, in order to move forward as expeditiously as possible, it is in the city's best interest to approve Resolution 8-19 in order to favorably renegotiate the terms of the MOU. Is that-
It's the council's decision whether it's not, whether or not it's in the city's best interests. But to continue the process moving forward, approving this resolution will continue it moving forward the quickest way possible.
Okay. And I guess just to answer the question that we heard in public comment that the MOU has not been available to the public for them to look at, it took me about 30 seconds to go to the city's website and find it and read it tonight. So it's there. It's been there since it was executed.
The MOU was approved by council in a regular session and signed October 2016.
Right. And it's been available on the website since then?
Yes.
Okay. So taking all of that into consideration, I would vote to move forward with approving Resolution 08-19.
Could you comment, Councilman Davis, on the direction regarding the consolidated coastal development permit, or if you don't have any comments, that's fine.
Absolutely, yes.
I just wanted to hear your comments, if you had any.
And my decision on both of those is for the purpose of moving this project as quickly as possible because of concern about meeting our construction date with Black and Veatch. And the sooner we move forward, the less we're going to be subject to rising construction costs, so.
Thank you. Councilman Eddis?
I'm supportive of taking action to move this forward. I think time is money. I think the prior council did due diligence, I believe, in Corolo's expertise. And I believe in the person who came to public comment and said we need to stay the course. I tend to agree with that. And so I'd like to see us move quickly and get a motion, if we need one.
And anything with regards to the consolidated coastal permit?
I'd like that to move forward as well. And the conveyance facilities project?
So I too agree with the need to move forward with adoption of Resolution 8-19. I believe it's in the best interest of the city and ratepayers to do that, to minimize costs in the future. I think if we don't, it jeopardizes the ability to obtain the parcel. It could potentially increase the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, that we might pay because we'd miss a deadline with regard to our contractor. In addition to that, I believe potentially it has a great potential to interfere with our ability to receive an SRF, which is a huge benefit to the ratepayer. The analysis showed that if we did receive the SRF funding, and I believe it was at a rate of higher than 1.7%, that it would reduce rates from $41 a month to $34 a month. That is a significant decrease for our ratepayers. And I would be remiss if I didn't move this forward and had to deal with potentially rates higher than that. In addition, I do think that the consolidated process, I support it. I do believe that it does allow for public vetting, that there's plenty of time for not only vetting through the California Coastal Commission, but also through the process you outlined, going to WRFCAC, CFAC, and some of the other committees that will happen prior to that. And so I share the concerns about the MOU- And so I share the concerns about the MOU. I think that's a legal consideration that will, I would feel comfortable asking our city attorney to evaluate and bring back to council if there are any issues that might, with regard to that, that might get in the way of the action that we take tonight, and that that be considered at a future date should we decide to move forward. I appreciate the updates that have been given. I think they're, they're well done, fairly easy to understand, once you wrap your head around some of the engineering jargon that's in there. I always appreciate that. And the cost comparisons resonate to me. And I do believe and agree with Councilmember McPherson that we should come back and consider a further discussion on the Quintana alignment versus Embarcadero, which really seem to be the two that we need to look at at potentially the next meeting. So having heard from everybody, basically, I'm hearing agreement by Councilmember Addis to move forward with the two action items, or excuse me, a single action item and supporting direction for the consolidated coastal permit. I'm hearing the same from Councilmember Davis, who has the concern that I do about the MOU that I think needs to be discussed further but should not impede this process. I heard the same from Councilmember McPherson with regard to agreement on both of the items that I just mentioned. I thought I heard Councilmember saying, you can correct me, Jeff, if I got it wrong, that you were in agreement with item number two, but you had concerns about the sphere of influence and felt that you needed further clarification. So I'm not sure where you are on that. And with regard to item three, you felt it was premature, if I captured that correctly. So.
Can I make a motion?
You certainly can.
Okay. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 08-19 authorizing the annexation and sphere of influence change application for the South Bay Boulevard site.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson, second by Councilmember Davis, to move the Resolution 8-19. Any further discussion? Voice vote.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
The motion carries 4-1, with Councilmember Heller opposed.
And I'll entertain another.
I will make another motion. I move that we give direction to staff to pursue a consolidated coastal development permit.
Second. Movement, excuse me, a motion by movement? I'm feeling the need for a break here. Motion by Councilmember McPherson, second by Councilmember Davis, to pursue a consolidated coastal development permit? It's getting late, folks. Any further discussion? If not, voice vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1, with Councilmember Heller opposed.
I'll entertain any consideration for either the MOU issue, if there's, other than, do we have consensus, we'd like further information to come back? Is that okay, if we just go with consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. And then also, direction on coming back with regard to the conveyance project, conveyance facilities and conveyance project itself at the next meeting?
At the next council meeting.
Pretty, we don't need a motion on that, that's just direction.
Yeah, direction.
Okay. That ends this item. And with that, we will take a health break for a couple of minutes for myself.
...to bring us into a balanced budget. So that's what's meant by that terminology in the proposed policy. Other than that, I will take questions.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. And any council questions regarding?
Excuse me. One of the things you've mentioned is a scorecard of key indicators of financial health. Can you describe how you plan to do that?
We talk about having a structurally balanced budget, and we've defined that in the policy as meeting all of our minimum fund balance reserves that were previously established. So that would be one indication of financial health for the city is we're meeting the objectives in the policies that we've set forth. Another one would be if we have identified, you know, new revenues or reduced expenditures per council direction, if we're keeping in line with the strategic priorities that the council has established and are able to fund those. This is really a two-way street. The financial plan can help steer council priority discussions. Council priority discussions can help steer the 10-year plan. So if we're able to meet the objectives that you as a council identified, that would be another one without going into a deficit budget.
I guess what I'm looking for is some sort of a one-page, like a dashboard indicator that says this indicator is being met, this indicator is being met, this indicator is being met, this indicator is not. So there's a, it's like looking at your dashboard and you see a bunch of green lights and then there's one or two red lights. Is this the kind of report that you're thinking of or not?
We could certainly incorporate that. I think it would include, again, are we able to fund your strategic goals? And I think that could be a checkmark or not. Are we meeting our debt covenants that were required to for like the water fund, for example? That would be a checkmark. Are we maintaining our bond rating that we just received? That could be a checkmark. Are we current on all of our debt payments that we have? I think we could create that. The intent was really to have more discussion and reporting back and more of a presentation and formal report for the council and the community on what are, what's our funding status for current service levels? What anticipated services do we know are coming forward? For instance, if you mentioned at one council meeting an SRO position, if we know that's a position we want to have come forward, how's that incorporated into the 10-year plan? And can we finance it? And then, and to make that clear in more of a document rather than just a conversation that you'd have to go back and look at the council meeting to hear.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Red. Any looking, seeing no other questions? Okay. Jen, thanks. We had a chance to meet today and I asked all the questions I had. One of my questions was similar to yours about metrics, and I like the idea of a dashboard, but so no further questions, and I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to move that council adopt Resolution 09-19, approving the City of Morro Bay's long-term financial planning, structurally balanced budget, and operating budget policies.
Second.
Tie goes to Mr. Heller, Councilmember Heller. First by, a motion by Mr. Davis, Councilman Davis, and Councilman Heller seconded. Any further discussion? Not? All those, no, a voice vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
And the motion carries 5-0.
And thank you, Jen, for this structural policy. Very important, and we really appreciate you continuing on, bringing our good standard procedures to us. Appreciate it. Ends agenda item C dash, if I can find my paperwork here. Sorry about that. C dash 2, and I'll move to C dash 3, discuss and consider changing the city council regular meeting start and time, consideration of Resolution 10-19, amending the city council policies and procedures, change the city council regular meeting start and end time. Turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Scott Collins, City Manager, and I'll try to be as quick as our finance director. Pretty simple here. City council directed staff to bring back this item with the interest of changing the start time of regular meetings to an earlier time and the end period to an earlier time than currently outlined in the city council policies and procedures manual, which currently states that meetings start at 6:00 p.m. and run through 11:00 p.m. They only go beyond 11:00 p.m. if there's an affirmative vote of the majority to continue beyond 11:00 p.m. One of the rationale for starting earlier is that we tend to experience is a lot of the peak of participation around 6:00 start time, up to 8:00, 9:00 sometimes, and then significant trailing off. And tonight is pretty evident of that as well. That's been a trend that I've seen since I've been here. So we're trying to find a sweet spot when people are most likely to attend and participate in the meetings and also just understanding how the human body works and functions. So there certainly are outliers. Most of us function well before 11:00 p.m., maybe even earlier than that, thinking of myself here. So we were trying to be cognizant of that as well when we came up with at least a recommendation of striving for you all to kind of debate about is, you know, 5:30 p.m. start seems like a good compromise. 5:00 p.m. may be too early for folks who maybe want to attend coming from, home from work or some other activity and want to have dinner before coming in to sit in our uncomfortable seats for three or four hours. And therefore, 5:30 p.m. seemed to be a good middle ground for start time and a 10:30 end time. We still allow for special meetings to occur before regular council meetings, which we were want to do in 2018 on certain occasions as well as closed sessions if those were necessary. So that was the thought process behind the recommendation and happy to answer your questions.
Great. Thank you for that report. Council questions?
I have some.
Yes. Marlese, please.
But I'm willing to let others go first.
First come, first served.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, you said the rationale was to encourage more participation, and I'm just curious, have we had complaints from citizens? Are we getting a lot of people who say that we're starting too late?
I haven't personally experienced the complaints. I see some head nodding going on up there. I was just, what I've observed in the audience, significant trailing off after 9:00. Some of that's attributable to the interests of people I may have, the controversial items perchance. We also did look at, I'm sorry to bring this up, we did look at what other cities in California does on this, and most start at 6:00 to 7:00, but there are some who start 5:00, 4:00, some earlier than that. So there's certainly is movement across California.
Well, I know that the rationale for starting at 6:00 is to let, allow people who work to get home and get a bite to eat before they come to the council meeting. Well, now the WRF is moving forward, do you believe that our council meetings will last as long? It strikes me that one of the reasons that we go so long is that we have been dealing with a very controversial topic, and I'm just wondering what you would anticipate now that we are moving.
Good question. We, going back to the goals and objectives exercise that council and the community engaged in last year for the development of the 2018 work plan, there were numerous items that we put on hold, if you will, that were very important for council and the community but simply didn't have the capacity to address because of the WRF project and general plan and some other things that are a massive outlay of time and effort, both on staff, consulting, maybe working on especially council members and advisory bodies that provide recommendations to this, to this council. So I would feel whether the WRF moves forward or what capacity and if it's no longer kind of in the chambers and it's just now a construction project, there'll be something to fill up that time. We do have, we do have a lot of other work to get to, and plus we'll be engaging the community and council again in the goals and objectives exercise in early March. So, you know, it's hard to predict what it'll look like.
And how would we inform the public of this change? They're quite used to having a standard start time, so it seems to me we would have to spend some time educating them about an earlier start time. I don't know that we could just pass it and start immediately. I would think we would need some outreach to, before we actually started this.
Excellent, excellent point, and really considered that in developing this recommendation. But certainly, there could be a delay of a couple meetings to inform the public when the, during those two meetings or three meetings, however many feels appropriate, to inform those who are regular attendees. We could post signage at the vets hall and other public facilities, on the website, next door, et cetera, to really get the word out.
Okay. And then, because we do often have special sessions and closed sessions beforehand, would you anticipate that those would start a half hour earlier also then?
Depending on the nature of the meeting, but typically, yes, we'd like to do that just so there could be time for council to take a break before or get some food before, in between.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Other questions?
Scott, do you see any difficulty with staff who attend the meetings changing from a 6:00 to a 5:30 start time?
Would, I don't need to poll them. I know they'd be supportive.
Good question, though. No questions? Councilmember Heller? No, I have no questions. With that, I'll, I'll actually entertain a motion, and then I'll open it up for discussion. How's that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
If I can find where it is. On move that we move the start and end time of regular council meetings and amend city council policies and procedure manual, Chapter 1, Meeting Guidelines and Procedures, section 1.1, 2.1, and 1.1, 2.3, changing the city council regular meeting start time from 6:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m., and changing the regular city council meeting span from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. to a new span of 5:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m.
Do you want to include the resolution? Do you want to move?
Resolution number 1019, adoption of that.
Okay, is there? I second. Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Addis, second by Councilmember Davis to move this issue. I'll open it up for discussion. Yeah? Councilmember Heller?
So I'm inclined to keep it at 6:00 as a public comment that I've gotten about it is a number of people won't be able to make it here from work in time. I think that that seems to be a good time to maximize participation based on what I read here in this report. So my thought is that we should keep it at 6:00 and just keep the meetings being run quickly and efficiently the way your mayor heading is running them now.
Thank you, and I had the discussion.
Okay. Well, since I'm next, I'll go next. I would be inclined to wait perhaps two, three months to see what time the meetings end. I honestly think that they are going to start ending earlier. And I would just as soon see what the effect of that is, in part because I agree that from the people I've talked to, they really, the people who work need to have some time to get here, and I am concerned about suddenly changing it. So at a minimum, I would think we would need to do some public outreach to let people know, so it wouldn't be an immediate effect. So that's my, those are my comments.
Thank you. I support the motion. I share the same concerns. I also have talked to a number of people that, and my biggest concern would be the opening public comment period. However, we have a number of usually presentations and/or recommendations, or not recommendations, but not only presentations, but recognitions that occur early on in the meeting, which is what happens tonight. We didn't have a business spot that usually takes about 10 minutes, and often we do have resolutions that recognize people that take a fair amount of time upfront. My one concern is the start time for the closed session meetings. I think it's extremely important for the council to eat, and I mean this seriously, prior to a meeting, hypoglycemia sets in and thinking can get very clouded, and it's important to have a break of at least a half an hour, if not 45 minutes between meetings. So I'm assuming that if we pass this resolution, that that would push our closed session start times often to 3:30 or 4:00. So that would be my assumption, and I would support it, and I would also believe that we would have to do that in order to make it here and give ourselves adequate time to do that. And so with that, I'll ask, you have comment?
Yeah. A lot of times last year, we had closed session on days opposite of the regular council meeting for that very reason. So that, just to throw that in there in the mix.
Correct. Yeah, we did. And so with that, I will, we've heard from everyone. You want to?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion maker is, well, you're for it. Go ahead. Sorry. Councilmember Davis?
I agree with the mayor that we have several things that happen before we enter the public comment. And of course, the public comment is essential to what we do, and we have to provide for that. But my observation is that, for instance, tonight, when we, when I arrived here at a quarter of, at 5:45, the room was full, the parking lot was full, so people were here and ready to go. And I have heard from people who say 11:00 is just too late, even if they're at home in their pajamas, they can't quite make 11:00. But I have been concerned for two years about staff in particular because staff starts work between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, and then we keep them here for another five or six hours, and then they have to be back at work the next morning. And I just think that that's hard on staff, and I really would like to have these meetings start earlier for them. And I think that it does not cause an undue hardship to the public because they'll still be able to engage in public comment at 6:00.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
I actually heard no negative feedback on this, and the one person that came to public comment was in support of it and is a working person. The feedback I've gotten has been that the meetings just go way too late and that it's too much. As a working person myself, I would say I'd rather start early, end early, and get up early the next day than to be here until 11:00 at night, and that's what I've heard from community members as well.
Okay.
I have a question.
Further? Sure. Okay.
Yeah. Could we amend the motion to suggest that we, public comment cannot begin before 6:00? Which, we used to say that about a public hearing, that they couldn't start before 7:00. So it seems to me that we have precedent for specifying when the public comment could begin.
I would be a little concerned about how we manage the first 30 minutes if we don't have enough material to fill that time. Public comment can begin with the people who are here at the time that it begins, and as tonight, it continued until almost 8:00. So there's plenty of opportunity for people to make public comment well after 6:00.
And I'll say from a mayoral perspective, if I noted that the meeting progressed rapidly and at a quarter to 6:00, we were done with, you know, recognitions and presentations, and public comment began, and we had people come in late after it was closed, that I would reopen it up. Just, I would, I would not want to curtail public comment. So I think it's a great point. I would just not, not do that because we started way too early, and maybe in six months, you know, people will get used to it and that'll be okay, but I do think it's an important point.
If I may ask, the motion on the table is to change the start time, but we didn't say anything about the effective date of doing that. So I would like to be sure that we follow up with a second motion to address that.
I think, Chris, you have a comment about that? That's a?
Yes. To that point, if the council wants this to not be effective for the next meeting, which is scheduled for February 12th, then we would need to amend the motion to say what council meeting date this change goes into effect. If it were to start in March or April, it would be either March 12th or March 26th or April 9th or April 23rd. And so if the council wants to amend the resolution, I've just made some language where we can plug in the date. Otherwise, resolutions are effective immediately, so this would kick in for the next meeting.
And Marlese makes a great point about notification, and I do think there needs to be adequate time. So I would look to our first to make an amendment as to the, I think it was Ms. Addis. Ms. Addis, do you want to make a friendly amendment on the implementation date?
Yes. Let's say the March date, March 12th? Is that the next one after the February? It was February 13th, though, right? Not 12th?
Yeah, I'm sorry. February 13th, and then there should be a meeting scheduled then for the last week of February. So we'd be, we'd have two more meetings starting at 6:00, and then we would start on the third meeting after tonight at 5:30.
Can we intentionally have something on the agenda or announcements at each of those interceding meetings?
You want to amend your second on that? Councilmember Davis?
I did, March 12th.
I could provide the, I could provide the exact language if you want.
That'd be great.
Okay. So if you look at the first page of the resolution where it says now therefore be it resolved, it would now read, now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city, by the city council, the City of Morro Bay does hereby amend as of, as of March, we'll say March 15th, the following sections of the city council policies and procedures manual treat as follows. And then also, at the very end on the next page, the passed and adopted line would say, passed and adopted by the city council, City of Morro Bay at a regular meeting thereof, held on the 22nd day of January 2019 by the following vote, comma, to be effective starting with the March 12th council regular meeting date.
So you could just say so moved.
Yeah, the first time you gave a date, Chris, you said March 15th. You meant the 12th?
I meant March 15th, so we would actually officially technically make the amendment after the first meeting in March, and it would be on the books for the March 26th, the March, it's the March 12th meeting. I'm sorry.
You said 15th.
Yeah. Well, then we'll make it March 1st. Yeah. Correct. Thank you, Councilman.
So moved.
And I second the amendment. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Great. And roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much. That completes that item, and that moves us to council declaration of future agenda items.
C4.
I'm sorry, C4. Oh, I forgot. That's not in my bag. I'm C4. Sorry about that. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
That's late.
So the subject matter here is a letter to the federal government representatives requesting an end to the federal government partial shutdown. You've heard a couple, almost every council member up there speak on behalf of this, and members of the public speak on behalf of this item, really trying to send a message to Washington. Do you see that they need to come together and compromise and figure a path forward to refund our federal government as there are being impacts felt locally, particularly for our coast guardsmen who are working to keep our waterways safe day and night with no pay and no housing and food allowances? And were it not for the extreme generosity of our community, both individuals, nonprofits, businesses stepping forward to help fill the gaps, they would potentially be out of homes and not be able to feed themselves. So pretty dire situation. We are, we're very thankful for what the community's been able to do and what some city staff members have done, and the fact that our council is reaching out already to our federal representatives to find a solution bodes well for all of us. But until such time, the federal government has been able to figure a solution for their shutdown, the recommendation here is to send a letter to Congressman Carver Hall, our two U.S. senators, and White House representatives to urge them to work together towards a compromise as soon as possible so that those impacts will no longer be felt by our local guards, coast guardsmen, as well as the 800,000-plus federal employees that are currently not earning a paycheck for no reason other than the federal government leadership can't come to compromise. So what we'd be looking for is, is there concurrence with how the staff report is currently? We'll just kind of model that for our letter. Is there additional recipients that you'd like us to include, other content to include in the letter would be most helpful? That letter ultimately would be signed by the mayor and sent forward to those individuals.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Who do I have on staff to thank for agendizing this item?
Well, basically, typically how this would come forward is through a future agenda item. And understanding that there was a lot of interest amongst council members for obvious reasons, I felt it was imperative to move this forward. Addis, brief discussion with the mayor. Can we, can we bring this forward even though it's after the agenda's been posted? He was in agreement, and that's, that's.
So I have you and the mayor to thank for this?
We, everybody up here.
It was Councilmember Addis who first mentioned it.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis.
Yeah, and Councilmember Davis, and like I said, all of you.
Nobody asked me.
Yeah. So rare circumstance where it occurs that way, but I think given the severity of the case, that's the reason it came that way.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Yes, you're absolutely.
First, thank you to staff, and thank you for, Councilmember Davis, for that recognition. Two things, I just, I do want the letter to be clear that this is not endorsement of the wall and that we're not taking stance on a compromise that has to do with a statement around immigration, so that, and that could be something very simple, however that's written, but I wouldn't want this letter to be construed as support around a border wall. And then, secondly, it looks like at the, at the national level, there might be something coming forward on Thursday, and so I'm wondering how quickly this might get done, like what the timeframe is.
We, I reviewed, after I heard that there may be a compromise, I reviewed the latest news, and it sounds like there would be two competing bills coming out of the Senate, one from the Democrats, which would not fund the wall, one from the Republicans, which would fund the wall, so that, the fact that they're putting some-
So that, the fact that they're putting something forward at all is progress, but there's a lot of work to do. So I.
The question is, yeah.
Yeah. So I think we'll be fine. We can get a letter turned around this week.
Tomorrow, right? Should be. Possibly?
Yes. Yes. I can do it tomorrow.
Well, I'm happy to sign it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I guess I would like to add to Councilmember Addis that we're not endorsing either side. This is a nonpartisan request to reopen the government and resolve your differences by parliamentary debate and not use a government shutdown as, as a bargaining tool.
Correct. That's my interpretation of the agenda item. Everybody? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that question.
And I'd like to make sure that we mention any federal workers, not just Coast Guard.
Absolutely.
It's anybody who had, is dependent on a government paycheck, U.S. government.
Yeah. I think we start from the funnel, the 800,000, and work our way down to the local.
Local level.
Yeah.
We have TSA employees and Forest Service employees as well.
No further questions, then I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Addis, would you like to make the motion? Just giving you the opportunity.
Sure. I will move to adopt a resolution. Let me make sure I got the right one. I don't have the right one.
Actually, here. Do you need a copy?
Yes, please. On the backside.
Backside. Next page. Yeah, right there.
Thank you. I still don't see it. You go ahead, Councilperson Davis, and I'll second.
I don't, I don't see a resolution.
No.
Okay. I move, I move to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the White House and to Morro Bay congressional representatives on behalf of the city and community requesting that Congress and the White House restore funding as soon as possible to end the partial federal government shutdown.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Davis, second by Councilmember Addis. Any discussion? Not? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
That does bring us to future agenda items. And thank you, Scott, for that, and sorry to put the pressure on you to get it out quickly. We've got timelines there. Future agenda items, any?
I have one.
Yes. Councilmember Heller, yes?
I am seeking consensus from my colleagues to direct staff to work on a proposal to help improve engagement with the community in general and on issues of significant importance to the city and the community. I'd like to see that come back to the council as soon as possible in the form of a list of outreach engagement options council can review and select from with the goal of moving forward with outreach methods that will work best for our community.
Well stated. I could support that. Absolutely.
Yeah. I think that's a goal that we have for this year. It's one of our goals, actually. So, yes, that's.
Seeing heads nod?
Yeah. So we're talking types of outreach, not topics?
Correct.
Okay. I support that.
Good. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it. And thank you for that. If I can get my agenda back. That ends our meeting. The next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, February the, am I looking at the right one? I'm sorry. 13th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Vets Memorial Hall located at 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you, staff.